...up and running before we officially start the meeting. Hey, how are you all? So, City Clerk, if we're ready for the record, Councilmember Chavez, Councilmember Sparza, are joining us virtually. Can you pop up your videos to make sure we can, you guys are online? There we go, let's, they've officially confirmed that they're not the Russian bots, so we can proceed with the meeting. City Clerk, please conduct roll call.
Councilmember Brettafield.
Here.
Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Sparza.
Present.
Councilmember Karbasi.
Present.
Councilmember Soria. Council Vice President Capriolio.
I'm here, thank you.
President Arias.
Present. Councilwoman, we do it as honor of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Council. Council, I would ask this, I would ask you to be a little patient today, we have a lot of adjustments on the agenda, so we're gonna try and get on the same page on any adjustments to the agenda. So, City Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have the following changes. Item 1E, actions pertaining to the installation of Immaculate and Imper-, the Lumipure Violet, Ultraviolet Disinfecting Fixtures at various parks. That item is being pulled by Councilmember Karbasi.
Councilmember, would you like the item pulled or tabled? Table, please. All right, we'll table it to the November meeting, City Clerk.
Okay. The next item I have is 1L, appointment of Sabrina Kelly to the Housing Authority Board. That's being continued to November 5th. Item 1O, actions pertaining to the acquisition of 1625 G Street is being continued to November 19th. 1O. The next item is 1Q, resolution supporting California's Proposition 20 on the November 2020 ballot is being removed from the consent calendar and it will be heard under the City Council items. Item 1S, actions related to United Health Centers, construction of clinics southeast and west Fresno, will, there will be no AAR provided as funding will be rolled up into the budget if approved. Item 1T, actions pertaining to the purchase of hotels to provide interim housing for at-risk residents due to COVID. The only item going before Council today is the 39th Amendment to the AAR. All the other sections are being deleted. And then pulling from the consent calendar, I have 1N as a Nancy and 1T as a Tom, and those are both being pulled by Councilmember Karbasi.
Well, I have items to pull, do you want to do that now, or?
Can we just, let me get through any changes to the agenda, then we'll get to the consent items being pulled. Is there any changes to the agenda that Councilmembers like to have? I'm gonna start with the Councilmembers online. Councilmember Sparza?
I'm hea-, I'm hearing that folks on CMAC are having trouble hearing Yvonne, so I'm not sure if that's the case for others.
We'll just get her a little closer to the mic, and I'll repeat the items before we move on. Councilmembers, Sparza, do you have any items to be, any changes to the agenda, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'd like to table item 1N as a Nelson.
Okay. Yep, item 1N is tabled. Councilmember Chavez, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, I'm just gonna register a recusal on 1K, but I guess we could wait till we do the consent.
City Clerk, just for the record, Councilmember Chavez is recusing from 1K. Anybody on the dais, starting to my left, any changes to the agenda? Member Karbasi?
No, thank you.
All right.
Nope.
Can, can Councilmember Sparza let us know if there's a date he's bringing item 1N back?
We're looking at October 29th.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Give me one second here. All right, I do have one change to the agenda. I'd like to table item 1Q, formally, 1Q, from the agenda. All right, is there a motion?
I have a procedure, if I wanted to keep that on, what do I need to do, make a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, well, we won't get a second, but I'd like to make a motion to keep it on the agenda, 1Q, which is in support of Proposition 20.
Is there a second for that motion?
Can I make a comment real quick? I've, I've come out publicly in favor of Prop 20, but I've made it very clear as a Councilmember, unless a member of the state legislature or Congress comes and requests us to take a formal position, I don't like these divisive propositions where we have no say in it to come before the Council. And I have complete respect, I think Councilmember Brettafield and I both feel very strongly about the violence that's occurring in our communities, but I don't think it's appropriate for the Council to take on these issues when we, it's really not in our wheelhouse.
All right.
Thank you.
Is there any second for the motion to keep the item on the agenda? Saying none, the motion dies. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Before you do that, I'm learning from staff that 1E is time-sensitive and should be heard today.
1E.
Instead of tabled to November 20th is the note I have.
All right, that's a request from the administration. Would the Council like to consider that request?
I'm gonna explain why, and I'm sorry I didn't talk to you earlier, City Manager, about this, I'm gonna explain why I wanted to pull 1E, 1N, and 1T. I'm hearing that we're almost out of CARES money. I've requested a memo from administration about, well, through the city attorney, about where we are with the money and what programs have been approved, and where we're not approved, I have not received that memo, so I can't make a decision on spending the last little bit of CARES money until I have that.
Just for some more detail, the lead time on these fixtures, UV fixtures, is running out, and so if we are unable to order them in the next few days, we will not be able to meet CARES deadlines.
So, staff, we are scheduled to meet on October 29th, next Thursday, so this item can be heard at that time if the questions by the Councilmember are satisfied.
Would a one-week delay really hamper it?
I would have to look, I don't know.
Okay.
Well, there's a motion, there are motions to approve the agenda as amended.
So move.
Council Vice President, is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
This is to?
Approve the agenda.
To put it on the gen-
To approve the agenda. Roll call, to motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Actually, I'm sorry, it's a no.
It's a no, okay, thank you. Councilmember Chavez?
City Clerk, did you register my recusal on the item?
Yes, I have that.
We haven't done that.
Yes.
We're just proving the agenda right now, but I've got that. Okay, Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Karbasi?
Yes.
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Council Vice President Capriolio?
Yes.
President Arias?
Yes. All right, Council, that takes us to our ceremonial presentations. We will start off with Councilwoman Soria, followed by Councilmember Karbasi, and then we'll conclude with the Mayor and Councilmember Karbasi. Councilwoman, you have the floor. And Council Vice President.
Good morning, folks, it feels a little weird, though, that there's not a lot of people in the audience. I do wanna join my Council Vice President, Paul Capriolio, today to celebrate the month of October, which is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And these, this year, obviously, we're doing things a little differently, without parades, without walks, and even our traditional proclamations here at City Hall. Nonetheless, I believe that it's extremely critical that we recognize this day, as do, as we do every year, to ensure that we are providing awareness for our community. It's critical that our community join in the fight against breast cancer by honoring those who are currently battling or have battled this disease in the past. Today, we honor all those who have survived the, the fight, and we work to educate the community about the seriousness of breast cancer and seriousness of preventative, preventative care. To all those young women who may think that you may be immune to it, we wanna encourage you to see your doctor and get early detection. Early detection is so critical to fighting breast cancer in our community. So, we know that 2020 has taught us a lot, that no one is immune to a disease and diseases can affect us all. This is why, as I mentioned, early detection is important, and the earlier it is detected, the higher chances of survival. So, let's not also forget that breast cancer also affects men. So, it's not just a issue for women. I also wanna encourage men to make sure that you get tested and that you are also getting detected early if, if that, that is gonna help you. Again, I wanna encourage everyone to visit one of the most common websites that we know for this issue, which is the Susan G. Komen Foundation website. Donate to the causes, even though we're not having any walks or fundraising events at the moment, because they still need the help to support the work to battle this disease and find a cure.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for sharing this opportunity. I truly appreciate your dedication, our dedication, I'm gonna take this off, slipping off my nose. Can't breathe. To this very, very critical health issue, so you and I've done this, I think, six years? Yeah, so, but, you know, all too often precious lives are interrupted or cut short by cancer. And breast cancer is one of the most common cancers amongst women. And men are becoming more and more aware of it, but women are the ones that have to suffer and pay that price tragically. So, with that, we wanna make sure people are aware of the disease and its symptoms and the ability to get treatment. So, we stand with the families who lives were tragically affected or cut short by this disease. So, let us arm our resources with the available things to devasti-, to fight this, sorry, I'm gonna, starting to get a little emotional because the next thing I have is a little bit tough. Anyway, we stand with those families, and we need to know what the best knowledge is, the tools that are available, and utilize those toward awareness and hopefully curing this awful disease. So, I know all too well, as you know, each year, I'm so grateful my mom is still here, so, I know what it's like to have someone tell you that there's a cancer victim in your family. In my case, it was my mom, and I'm grateful for the diagnosis and the treatment that she received, and ultimately it was a double mastectomy, but she'll be 94 November 13th, I'm so happy and proud of her. And I remember how strong she was during this battle, and she never gave up. She never gave up on herself, she never gave up on our family. My dad was suffering from Alzheimer's, she is, she's just a warrior, she really is. So, let's all never give up, and let's all take steps to become more aware of this tragic and awful disease, and we'll never stop fighting for it. So, thank you for your time.
And then just lastly, I wanna close again, in celebration of making October 2020 the Breast, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, today marks 35 years that National Breast Cancer Awareness Month has educated women about early breast detection, diagnosis, and treatment. And as was mentioned, just if we think about the statistics, one out of eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer, so this is a big deal, and we wanna make sure that women get early detection and get the treatment that is needed if they are in fact detected with this awful, awful disease. It doesn't discriminate, so make sure that you, you see your doctor, and let's be grateful for all those folks and honor those folks that have been warriors and have fought and have been able to fight this awful disease. And with that, thank you, everyone.
Council, we're gonna give our Mayor about a couple minutes to come in for the next ceremonial presentation. Yeah, we're gonna go with Member Karbasi and myself on the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And then the Mayor's up next.
Council President, the Mayor's online.
Hello?
Hey, Mayor, welcome. Since you're online, we're gonna go with the Mayor's item and the Councilmember Karbasi's item, which is a proclamation of Richard Dale Keyes Senior Day. So, Member Karbasi and Mayor, you have the floor.
Mayor, Councilman Karbasi, you wanna go first, or want me to go first?
I'll defer to you to go first, Mayor.
Well, thank you. I've only met Richard Dale Keyes a few times, but my initial impression of him was he was a very kind and thoughtful person, he was a humble man, who rejected a quiet confidence that people respected. He served over 25 years as Commissioner on Equal Opportunity Commission, Economic Opportunity Commission, served numerous boards and commissions and committees. He was the epitome of community service, and he championed many causes throughout our community, including setting up the Ethic Studies at Fresno State, he was the Chair of Black Studies Chair, and his love of communities was evident everywhere in his entire life, and he directly or indirectly affected the lives of many people. He was truly a life well, well-lived, and he will be missed, and it was my pleasure to have met him. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. So, Director Keyes was a longtime District 2 resident, I only had the pleasure of serving with him briefly because I'm a new Councilmember, but I did get an opportunity to speak to a lot of the people in his life that were loved ones, and, you know, no one had anything bad to say. He was someone that was very relied upon and offered a lot, you know, we did some work together, offered a lot of insight, and clearly was a man of the world, knew a whole heck of a lot more than I did. So, you know, I, on behalf of the residents of District 2, to his family, I wanna say we, you know, we do wish you our condolences during, during this time for his loss, and we thank him for his many years of service to the greater community.
Member Karbasi, if I could add to that, I would move that we adjourn today's meeting in loving memory of Mr. Keyes.
Well said, Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Karbasi?
Yep.
Councilmember, can I also, I just wanna make a few remarks on this, because I actually knew Dick Keyes pretty well. I had the honor to serve with him on the Fresno EOC Board, and as a new board member, you know, he was a veteran there, and he took me under his wing and mentored me through the time that I was there, teaching me about budgets, teaching me about, you know, the policies, and just the process to ensure that we were fighting poverty in our community. So, to a pioneer, to a poverty fighter, I salute him. I know that he has left a lasting impression not only on myself as a young woman who also has committed myself to fighting for those that are underserved, and he's just been a, a role model to many of us, and we're grateful for the legacy that he left behind. And we, you know, honor him, but we also wanna send our condolences to the family who is experiencing a big loss, and we've also, as a community, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember, while you're down there, we can start on the next resolution, the Domestic Violence Month recognition.
Okay. You wanna come down over here? Just take a moment. Thank you, Nicole, for being here. Yeah, we have masks, we're okay. Yeah. Yeah, that's the hardest thing about COVID, you can't hug, you can't shake hands, you can only elbow. So, this month is the Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and, you know, unfortunately with COVID, one of the, one of the parts of collateral damage worldwide with shelter in place is that we've had an increase in domestic violence, and Fresno isn't immune to that. And I'm so grateful to the many organizations that deal with issues of domestic violence, including the Marjorie Mason Center, and it's really important that you know that you do have our support as a city, because we do have a lot of victims of domestic violence, and, you know, mothers and children that face this issue, and it's important we step up. Council President?
Thank you. As you know, Marjorie Mason Center is home, their home is District 3, and our family has utilized their services, and we appreciate the role that you have in the city, and as a reflection of the value for the work that you do, this year, the Council approved more than half a million dollars in additional funding from the CARES Act to house all the victims of domestic violence during this COVID pandemic that can be congregated in one building as, under normal conditions. So, we appreciate the, and value the work that you guys have done, we'd love to have you as a neighbor in downtown Fresno and across the cities where you guys serve, and we wish you that you continue doing that great work and supporting all the victims, especially the kids who need a safe place during a difficult time in their lives.
Thank you very much, Council, yes. In addition to, obviously, awesome other causes such as breast cancer awareness, October is, is home to domestic violence awareness. Today is actually National Purple Thursday, which is why we're in purple, where around the world we raise awareness. Fresno is not immune to domestic violence even pre-COVID, as we have some of the highest call rates in the entire state. And with the violence that we've seen in the community, we've also seen the increase again in domestic violence right now. And so, I just wanna thank the Council, all of you, for your support, for your bravery in tackling this issue. It's been almost 42 years since Marjorie Mason was murdered in our city, and we are, it's not lost on us that we have a lot of work to do. So, thank you for your investments, for your commitment, and your partnership to make sure that survivors have what they need to, to seek safety, so thank you. Do you wanna take a picture?
Sure, if you want to. Miguel? One picture, I'm sorry.
All right, Council, I know we had a little bit of a audio hiccup in the beginning of the meeting, for those who are watching from the CMAC channel and maybe online, so if you could, City Clerk, just remind us what items have been pulled. I show that item 1E was tabled till the next meeting. Item 1L is being tabled to the next meeting. Item 1O is being continued to November 19th. Item 1Q was removed from the agenda, and then there's a couple of changes, and item 1N as a Nancy was moved to October 29th.
And we're still pulling items off of the consent?
Yes.
If we want, right.
Consent calendar is next, just wanna make sure the public knew?
Sure, sure.
The agenda that was adopted now, Council. Our next portion of the meeting is pulling the items from the consent calendar.
Or is it Councilmember reports?
Yeah, what about reports and comments?
Oh, that's right. Thank you, Councilmembers, for the reminder. We'll start with the Councilmembers online. Councilmember Sparza, do you have any comments or reports?
I'll yield my time for now.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yeah, just wanna thank the family of our late Principal at Sunnyside, Tim Lyles, for working with our office, and extra special thank you to the, a lot of the kids over at Sunnyside, which is really their idea to rename the entryway of Lane Avenue into Sunnyside into Tim Lyles Way, which is, I believe, an agenda item, I think, today, this afternoon, so just wanna, you know, express our condolences, but also thank them for, for working with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilman Brettafield, you have the floor.
Thank you. Wanna address something, this Council pulled my item, which was expressing support for Proposition 20. Let me say, first of all, what Proposition 20 is. First of all, it is supported by Chief Hall, our police chief, FPOA, and almost every law enforcement throughout the state. Prop 20 rolls back changes to the classification of crime as a result of Prop 47 and 57, which weakened all the criminal laws. Prop reverses what Prop 57 said were non-violent crimes. What does that include? Child sex trafficking. This Council wants to fight child sex trafficking, but they don't wanna support Prop 20. It reverses raping an unconscious person as a non-violent crime. Right now, it's labeled non-violent. Battery on a police officer, firefighter, felony domestic violence. We just did a proclamation regarding the work that Marjorie Mason Center does, and Prop 20 would help defeat domestic violence. It reverses Prop 47, shifting of crimes from felonies to misdemeanors. It creates two new crimes, serial and organized theft. It reinstates DNA collection for less serious crimes. It makes fewer people eligible for parole. That's what Prop 20 does. As we are dealing with all of the rampant crime throughout our city, it was said that Prop 20 is divisive. Let me tell you what's divisive, 50 homicides in our city, 564 shootings this year, shootings that's doubled from last year, 34 homicides last year at this time, we have 50 right now. We've seen the Violent Crime Suppression Task Force that started in October 6th, now we're starting to see a reduction in crime. You have to deal with crime through law enforcement. If people have guns and weapons and are killing themselves, we need to have consequences and accountability. Prop 20 provides that accountability. Unfortunately, this Council decided they don't wanna engage in that and support those kinds of efforts that truly will reduce crime. That's why every law enforcement supports it. And I want to say that yesterday, there was a press conference with all of law enforcement, our tremendous, our great District Attorney Lisa Smith Camp, the FBI, Department of Justice, our FPD, the California Highway Patrol, and they're working on dealing with the rampant crime and the spiking and skyrocketing crime in our city. There are programs such as Project Guardian, Project Safe Neighborhoods, that's put on by the US Attorney, I recommend people look at that, real programs that deal with reducing crime. Our DA, Lisa Smith Camp, talked about the zero policy, bail policy needing to be changed. She called out the Governor yesterday and state representatives, and she quote said, "Governor's new solution to COVID protection and prevention is letting inmates out of prison with no regard for the victims and the communities they will return to terrorize." So, I just said it, "Governor, open up the prisoners, prisons, do your job," end quote. I don't know if people know, he's locked down prison, so you arrest people, not only do we throw them out of jail within an hour, but they don't send them to prison. Why? Because of COVID. So, that's why we have rampant crime in our city, skyrocketing murder rates, and we had a proposition that I encourage everybody to support if you are sick of this, because this will strengthen criminal laws. It will make what are misdemeanors now felonies, and it went in reverse with Prop 47. And this Council pulled that item. They said it was divisive, they don't wanna address it. Well, it doesn't affect us, they said. It does affect us, crime is affecting us, and you have to strengthen criminal laws. Prop 20 did that, and this Council pulled it. So, I think everybody needs to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brettafield. We will now go to Councilmember Karbasi.
Thank you. So, if we can all take a moment to calm down, I, I wanna make some, a response to what was just said, because it was my comments the Councilmember was referring to, and I wanna say this with full respect, because I respect Gary Brettafield and his positions, he's a good colleague. When I say that these, all the propositions on the ballot are divisive, it's because when you look to see who supports it and opposes it, the Republicans are on one side and Democrats are on another side. This is the problem plaguing our democracy today in California. It shouldn't be either or. We've got, I've said it before, this idea of a false-choice society, you know, I, I really, I, look, no one has been more of a vocal supporter of law enforcement and law and order than me on this Council, fighting against defunding, because defunding isn't a solution. I've come out in favor of Prop 20, I've done it publicly on my time. What I don't want with this issue or any other issue, whether it's left or right or whatever, is putting these issues before the Council and forcing us as a Council to take those false-choice positions and further divide this community. Now, what I can tell you is, with the uptick in violence with our, our young people dying today, it's in my district, it's in the Northwest Police District, we're not even done with the- District. We're not even done with the year yet. And we have doubled the shootings now in my district than we had last year. In the Central District, it's almost three times. In Southwest and Southeast Fresno, it's almost double. So, it's my community that's getting plagued by this, and I am standing up and speaking. But we cannot wait for Prop 20, if it passes or it doesn't pass, to solve this problem. What are we doing now? What are your elected officials doing now to solve this problem? Now, Councilmember Chavez and I did have a long talk with our police chief. And I was so proud of him yesterday at that press conference, standing up to make it very clear that we are not taking this lightly, that we are going to get more aggressive and ensure people that commit violent crimes and our, our verified, our, the verified gang leaders will go to jail. When someone commits a crime, you have to understand, there is a victim. There is a victim and their family, and the children in those families that have to face that trauma. What are we doing to solve that problem? And we can't wait for the November election. What are we doing now? People want answers now. They don't want drama and division. And so, that's what I'm, all I'm going to say on that issue. I do encourage folks to vote for Prop 20. I'm going to be voting for Prop 20. The other issue is, I had the honor of touring the Central California Food Bank. They are a great organization. They've done a lot, but with COVID, they're doing even more. And I just want to give you some statistics about what they do for the city of Fresno. They've distributed this past year almost 14 million pounds of food just for the residents of Fresno. They have 24 neighborhood markets and mobile pantries. Now, what's really interesting is they also have a diaper bank. So, a lot of our disadvantaged families that need help with, with diapers, why that's significant is, sometimes if you want to take your child to daycare, you have to supply diapers. So, a parent won't be able to work if they can't afford those diapers. And this diaper pantry, there are five of them in Fresno, really makes a big difference to help our disadvantaged communities. They have 100 partner feeding sites, and they have 26 school distribution and backpack sites. Right now, because of COVID, they have five COVID relief sites. And they do, they've coordinated with some of the, the Community Regional Medical Centers, which is a great organization, for food deliveries, for homebound seniors. So, I am so grateful to them for what they've been doing and taking the time to educate me on their programs and their challenges. And lastly, I know that folks saw the presentation, but thank you to the Marjorie Mason Center, breaking the chains, fights human trafficking, and all the organizations that have done a lot throughout the pandemic, before the pandemic, but now with the pandemic, have kicked up in high gear and stepped up to make sure our disadvantaged and victims do have their, their needs met. Thank you.
Councilmember Vice President Capriolio?
Thank you very much. I wanted to first thank the administration, city manager, assistant city manager, for all their hard work in District 4. We've been running a marathon for seven and a half years, and now we're coming to the finish line, and we're getting real close to completion of a lot of projects that we've been working on for a while. So, we'll report all that to you at a later date, but it's really exciting, and it couldn't happen without your assistance, as well as a vote from my council members. Now, the item, the Prop 20, I totally agree with my colleague, Member Karbasi's comments and statements. And I further would appreciate from you, sir, that you're not just raising the problem. You actually did something about it. Raising the problem or talking about it is not an answer. And you actually provided an answer with you and Member Chavez engaging in law enforcement and making sure our voices are heard at that level. We all individually talk to our law enforcement first responders often, we, I certainly do. But to have a unified front and to address the issue of how to solve it, that's critical. So, congratulations to you guys and what you've done. And I appreciate all your hard work, and we'll all stick together and get through this traumatic time in the history of Fresno.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Councilmember Soria?
Thank you, Council President. I have a few, a few announcements. So, on Sunday, October 25th, at 11:00 AM, the Tower District is having their annual pooch parade. This year, they're doing it a little bit different. They will be live streaming it, and it will be, it will be following CDC guidelines, including social distancing, and masks will be required. But just so folks know, we're trying to still continue to do events without putting anyone at risk in, in our community. Next, I want to announce that we are having our procurement process workshop. I have, I'm coordinating this event with city staff and also with the Chamber of Commerce. We are going to be doing this on Wednesday, October 28th, at 2:00 PM. I believe that more than ever, it is critical that this city looks at creating and opening the opportunities for our local businesses to actually be able to procure contracts and ensure that the dollars actually stay local, that folks in our community can get hired, and that those dollars are recycled back into our neighborhoods. So, that's the goal with the procurement workshop. Also, just want to remind folks that I am working on the Melbourne and Dakota Park west of the 99. We still are in a survey phase. We have developed and designed two different options for the park. And we encourage everyone to find the survey link on our council Facebook page. Please submit your response and your input by the end of this month. We value everyone's input, so we want to make sure folks participate. Also, just want to, one, thank folks like folks from the Lions Club, Jakara, and my staff, along with UCSF Fresno, Neighborhood Industries, who has been working on putting these Community Health Days together throughout, not just in District 1. I know that other folks are doing them in their district, where we're providing food, free flu shots, free COVID testing, and free masks. And so, we just want to thank those volunteers that have come out, including Dr. Ramblah's office partnered with us, to make this, these events successful. We have been able to serve hundreds of Fresno families who now have their flu shots and are making sure that they're not infected with COVID-19. Yeah. So, thank you to everyone who has made that possible. Also, just want to put in a plug for our Central California Blood Bank. As you guys may have heard, they are short in blood. I'm going to be hosting in conjunction with trustee Annalisa Perea next month, a blood drive at gazebo gardens. And for the first 50 people that join us and register and actually donate blood, they will enter a raffle. We'll be announcing more details as we get closer to the event, but that is going to be happening next month. But if you can't attend that event, please visit the blood bank and donate blood during this time that they're short of blood. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I just have a couple of updates for the council. One is, please put, hold on your calendar for next Thursday, October 29th, at 9:00 AM. That's when we're going to continue and hopefully adopt the final budget. The administration needed some additional time to reconcile all our amazing motions and to work through some of the outstanding gaps that we have. So, October 29th, 9:00 AM, city staff, if you can plan to publish that. It will be, should be a short meeting. In addition to the budget adoption, there will also be an item related to the housing, 1N as a Nancy, as well as an item related to the purchases of motels under the Home Key Grant Program of the state. So, there'll be a couple of items for us to discuss that morning. And finally, where Councilmember Chavez and I have been working with the community on trying to wrestle with the increased violence in the city. And I, I don't want to get into a debate about, you know, whose fault it is. I think it's fair to say that Washington, DC, and Sacramento are not responsible or the source of all our problems. And more importantly, they're not the solution to all our problems, including the increase in crime. It's up to us as a city and community to identify local solutions. And our law enforcement agencies are collaborating, as referenced by yesterday's press conference, on their response to crime. But it is a community's responsibility to prevent crime. And that's the work that Councilmember Chavez and I have been working on with community leaders in Fresno. With that, we're going to be hosting a summit Wednesday evening of next week at the Fresno Fairgrounds between 4:00 and 6:00. I invite my council colleagues to attend to hear directly from our youth, our residents, our community leaders on the source and the reasons for the increase in crime. But most importantly, to observe how they identify with us, prevention strategies, and interventions for us to tackle the prevention part of crime in Fresno. As, as I've mentioned, the responsibility of our police department is to respond to crime. They cannot be given the full responsibility to raise our kids, you know, keep our communities healthy, and keep them safe at the same time. It is a community's responsibility to prevent crime. And I'm looking forward to that conversation with community leaders next Wednesday. So, the council is welcome to attend and observe the conversation as the community tells us what it is that Fresno needs to help reduce the violent crime that we've seen in our community. I do want to thank Chief Hall and Deputy Chief Salazar for participating in our planning meeting yesterday and the city manager's office as well. So, you're welcome to come Wednesday, around 4:00 to 6:00 next week. With that, council, we'll move to the consent calendar.
Council President?
Councilmember?
I have, I have a budget motion I'd like to throw in the hopper for next week.
Please proceed.
I'd like to increase our parks allocation from 5 million to 6 million, the previous motion.
Is there a second for that motion? I'll second it. It is seconded by Member Karbasi. It is in the queue. And I hope the mayor heard you and takes some heartburn medication for us to continue to work through the budget.
So, just a point of order, then. Since the new motion has been made, and we're not bringing the budget back until 9 o'clock next Thursday, when are you voting on that motion, so that staff can prepare to include that or not?
We can vote on that motion Thursday morning, as late as Thursday morning. What's the way of the council? Would the council like to vote on this motion today or wait till Thursday? We can vote at any time.
Let's wait till Thursday, Council President, just to get staff time to vet through a lot of the list that we're working through. And I think Monday will be helpful when we reconcile the CARES dollars and all expenditures.
All right. Then, if I hear correctly, we'll take a final vote on Thursday. So, just put it in the queue, city manager, that there might be an additional million dollar
If I hear Henry scream from the budget office, and we need to take it earlier, I'll let you know.
Thank you, city manager. Henry, please double down on heartburn medication for the rest of us. All right, council, let's move on to consent. I'll start with the council members online. Is there any items you'd like to pull from consent?
I, I don't have any other items to pull. I think they've been pulled already. I'm just going to register that recusal on item K.
Correct. Let the record show, Councilmember Chavez is recusing from item 1K. Councilmember Espaza, any items to pull?
Yes. Has item 1U, has that been pulled yet?
Not yet.
I'd like to pull out for discussion.
Okay.
I'd like to pull item-
Give me one second. Let me go to Councilmember Brettafield real quick.
Okay. I'd like to first register a no vote on K. And recusal on T as in Tom.
T as in Tom.
Because of a conflict, potential conflict. And I'd like to pull item R as in Robert. I guess, Mr. Espaza pulled U already?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to pull V as in Victor and W.
And W, all right. So, so far, we have 1U, 1R, 1V as in Victor, and 1W. Any other items the council would like? Councilmember Soria?
And just want to make sure, you got the recusal on T, okay, and the no on K. Okay, thank you.
1F.
Councilwoman Soria, it's 1F. Any other items, Councilwoman? All right. Councilmember Vice President Capriolio?
I'm ready to vote.
Councilmember Karbasi? All right, I will pull-
The motion.
Item 1M as in Mike for discussion. So, clerk, the following items have been pulled from consent for discussion. 1U, 1R, 1V, 1W, 1F, and 1M. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the remainder of the consent.
Motion.
Motion approved.
Motion by Member Soria, seconded by Member Espaza. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the remainder of the consent calendar? We have one member. Brandy, you've been unmuted.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that you guys are coming, that we are getting funding for, to provide more hotels, to provide housing. I know that you are just doing the execution, and I do want to ask that, as you guys discuss this, that, and you're seeking housing, I know there's information, there's interest in motel drag that you housing that is not on the fringes of town, and consider housing that would be in areas where people can be able to thrive as, as being part of the neighborhood. Those who are unhoused are members of our community. I appreciate the housing that we're going to have on Blackstone and the children and elderly that need to be close to services. And just simply ask that, as you guys are considering these things, to consider those who are seeking the housing and, needing housing, and consider places that you would want to live in and where people can be able to thrive. But I'm a great, want to express my support and very grateful for this funding that has come in. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? De Angelique Jackson?
Good morning, and thank you so much for the opportunity. I was just wondering and, and wanted just to bring to the forefront, the act having to do with the, or the CARES Act, excuse me, and the emergency resolution. Just bringing up how for Fresno State and ACP lists of demands, we asked for a certain amount of funding to go to the black community in Fresno, and are still waiting updates as well, waiting on updates, as well as for the opportunity to have a conversation on how these funds will be allocated for the black community. So, we're definitely watching and hopeful to see where this conversation will lead to over the next coming months. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member from the public? Seeing none, we'll go to the first, actually, we'll go to roll call. Let me get my members back in. All right, let's go with roll call for the remainder of the consent calendar.
I'd like to clarify before I do roll call. I had that 1T as in Tom was pulled by Councilmember Karbasi.
I don't have that pulled.
You don't have that?
No. I thought he had his questions answered, so he whispered to my ear.
Oh, okay. Okay. Councilmember Brettafield?
Say that again?
There are two. There are two on the phone.
We need five. Let me get my colleagues to come back in the room. The record show that Councilmember Karbasi has been hydrated, so he's back on the dais. So, council member, we have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar. 1F, 1M, 1R, 1U, 1V, 1W were pulled. So, we're ready for roll call.
Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Espaza?
Aye.
Councilmember Karbasi?
Aye.
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Council Vice President Capriolio? President Arias?
Yes. All right. Let the record show that the consent got approved with the necessary five votes. We will now take the items that were pulled from consent in the order, starting with 1F as in Frank. Councilwoman Soria?
Just had a quick question. I know that we've been talking about this, the, what is it called? Oh, my God. The generator for some time. I know that there is money set aside. Is that general fund money that was put to cover the cost for the replacement of the generator?
Good morning, council. Scott Moser, Public Works-
Scott Moser, Public Works Department. So this is in regards to the generate, emergency generator at the municipal services center. That is-
Scott, can you get closer to the mic so they can hear you from the public?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Council President. Scott Moser, Public Works Department. The item before you is in regards to the emergency generator at the municipal services center. And that-
We lost you.
No, it's fine, it's-
All right, test, okay, perfect. Okay, so this item, it's funded through our facilities, repair and replacement, but thanks to Councilmember Soraya's question, what is this general fund? It is spread across all the tenants in the MSC. So for example, the shares of that DPU pays a share of that through solid waste, who's at MSC, their engineering, street maintenance, landscape maintenance, that's primarily things like, it's like gas tax, Measure C funds go toward that. So general fund is a small, small component at MSC.
The only reason that I bring that up, yesterday or a couple days ago, I sent, I forwarded an email to the mayor and I think some of his staff. CAL OES has grants available that are, where we would be eligible, up to $300,000 to cover for these types of costs. Did we explore any grant opportunities to cover? I know that it may seem minimal, but I just want to make sure that we're maximizing every opportunity so that if we don't have to use gas tax, which we need for sidewalks and streets, or if we can avoid using some of the other funds, we're using grant dollars. So that was my only question, that's why I brought it up.
Absolutely, and council, that's a great segue. Yes, staff is aware of the CAL OES grant, that's due at the end of the month. We're exploring opportunities. Certainly, this is the design phase of that and we would need to be in position. So we would need to expend these dollars to be ready for that, but if we're successful on CAL OES, that could fund a portion of the construction cost of the generator.
Okay, so this is, this could be an eligible expense for the construction of it?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, perfect, a motion to approve.
I'll second that. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais for roll call.
Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Yes.
Councilmember Soraya? Council Vice President Capriolio?
Yes.
President Arias?
Yes. All right, next item is one M. I pulled the item. Who can speak to this item? Trying to understand what services are we actually paying for as part of this $68,000 contract? And then we'll let her disinfect H.
Council President, City Council, H Spies, Director of Strategic Initiatives, Office of Mayor Lee Brand. This item before you is for the mayor's faith-based partnership agreement. And the answer to your question is in Exhibit A. This, the actions that are taken by Fresno Pacific University's Center for Community Transformation are the quarterly gatherings of representatives from all of the major faith communities in Fresno to advise the mayor on critical issues, provide information, news and updates from the city to religious and charitable groups, recommend how the city can move effectively and partner with faith-based organizations to help the wider community and engage congregations and constituencies in actions, projects, and programs connected to key mayoral initiatives and critical to the city's welfare. Dr. Randy White from the Center for Community Transformation is on the call and would be able to give you specific bullet points in terms of some of the outcomes and deliverables that have taken place over the last four years of this agreement.
So from my reading of the agreement, H, we're paying Fresno Pacific to organize meetings of religious leaders who then advise the mayor?
That, definitely that. So there's a, there's a, three times a year, there's a meeting of all of the major networkers for the faith communities. That would include the bishop of the Catholic Church, it would also include Rabbi Rick, it would include the head of the Sikh community, what have you, LDS, what have you. But in addition to that, there are specific actions that have been taken. And I'd love for, and the Center for Community Transformation organizes those. I'd love for Dr. White to address those, but basically, those include, for instance, just a couple of examples, they coordinated the former, the, a relationship with faith-based congregations to do 60 home repairs on residents on the west side. They coordinated the writing and distribution of a document called Holiday Tips to discourage faith communities in distributing Thanksgiving and Christmas in unwise ways on G Street so that that didn't conflict with the rescue mission and the Pavarello's good work. And significantly, they trained 60, 50 congregations in an initiative that comes out of this group called Sacred Streets, which is helping congregations to be a part of the homeless outreach in our community, to meaningfully engage homeless folks in our community.
H, do we have a similar arrangement with anybody else, where we pay them to organize meetings to advise the mayor? I mean, there's community-based organizations-
It's not simply to organize meetings to advise the mayor. For instance, with Sacred Streets, there's, there are deliverables there. That's 50 congregations that have actually gone through training and those trainings have taken place over time, so it isn't just advising the mayor. It is actually getting work done in communities, including adding, doing repairs on senior homes in neighborhoods with high concentrated poverty, as well as mobilizing congregations to actually be meaningfully involved in addressing homelessness.
But can you speak to the, to the work that, what is it that you guys are going to do with $19? I know that you guys already spent $50,000 because that's why you're here. The mayor has discretion to spend up to $50,000.
Right, the first year was $12,000, the second year was 18, third year was 19, and this is 19, so it's, it's gone over the $50,000 threshold. And what takes place, the backbone of this, is the convening of the, the most influential networkers of various faiths in the community to not only advise the mayor, but also mobilize their congregations to be involved in specific work. And then, secondarily, what the Center for Community Transformation does is to actually train and equip those congregations to engage in the work.
So is this money going to the center or?
It's going to the Center for Community Transformation to do this work. We consider it a bargain because it's generated thousands of person hours and thousands of actual dollars that have gone into seniors roofs, ramps, ADA ramps for seniors' homes, fixing fences, painting houses, mobilizing congregations to reach out to homeless folks, get them engaged meaningfully in homeless services. So it's, it's really mobilizing the sleeping giant of our faith-based community to be consistently involved in initiatives that are important to our city.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, H, one of the things I love about this country is our liberties and our freedoms. We have a lot of folks that maybe aren't religious, but we have a whole heck of a lot of folks that are. I know we're asking for $19,000, that's a lot of money to a lot of families, but we've also, in these last few months, have given out millions of dollars supporting organizations and to ask for $19,000, I've got a feeling we're getting a lot of bang for our buck here, and I'll explain why. I've said before that government can't be the only part of the solution. I can tell you that for the people of Herndon Town or the people of, throughout the city, it's actually been a lot of our faith-based groups. I know that Cornerstone Church and People's Church haven't provided just thousands of meals, they've provided hundreds of thousands of meals. So they do make a big mark. So I personally, I, and I'm very, very big on being a steward of tax dollars, but I really do like the idea of engaging with all the faiths because they do mobilize and it's a good way for us to hear about maybe what some of the folks in, within their communities are facing and how we can address their needs. So I'm a big supporter of this, I really appreciate this faith-based initiative and I thank you for bringing it forward.
Thanks, Councilmember Carbasi. Just two, two quick responses on that. Number one, the, the one thing I didn't mention is that this, the Center for Community Transformation has also used this network to do massive food distribution during these COVID times. And then, secondly, one of the key pieces of advice to the mayor has to do with hearing from the Sikh community, hearing from the Islamic community and other communities of threats that they feel, perceive, or have received so that we can, the mayor can be aware of those.
Thank you, H. I'm not, my concern isn't the $19,000 or the $68,000 thus far. What I'm trying to understand is, we're in the middle of a crisis in our city and we've seen our law enforcement agencies collaborate and coordinate, we've seen our community-based organizations collaborate and coordinate, and it seems to be pretty silent from the faith-based leaders. And what I'm trying to understand is, have we asked them to, through this network, to come forward and help us with this prevention of the escalating violence of crime? Or are they still focused on feeding people and doing charitable work? Because I, like Councilmember Carbasi indicated, they're a huge constituency and they bring a lot of value to our city. I'd like to see them also step forward on trying to provide some support for everybody who's grieving and who's struggling to figure out how to help with the prevention and the decrease of the violence that we have in our city. And I would just ask that you and Fresno Pacific join us on next Wednesday and try to come forward as a partner, because we clearly have a relationship, not just a partnership, but a financial relationship, and I'd like to see them leverage that opportunity to also be part of the solution.
We will be there. We'll invite the mayor's faith-based partnership cabinet to be there. And I'll also say that most of the folks that are involved in the faith-based partnership cabinet are engaged in reducing violence and are very concerned about the outbreaks of violence in our, in our most desperate communities.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais for a roll call. Thank you, H.
Thank you, council.
Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Aye.
Councilmember Soraya? Council Vice President Capriolio?
Yes.
And President Arias?
Yes.
Mr. President, before we go to the next item, there's a 10:00 AM District Four matter. If we could call that so I can keep it on time, because I have some people that are listening in that wanted to hear about what we're getting a vote on this. So the schedule for 10 is 10:13, it shouldn't take more than five minutes.
I will accommodate your request, Council Vice President. We will hear the 10:00, 10:00 o'clock hearing. The hearing is to adopt resolutions and ordinance to annex territory and levy a special tax regarding the city of Fresno Community and City District Number 11, annexation number 114, for final track map 6235. I will open up the hearing.
Motion to approve.
Let me first see if there's any member from the public, anybody wishing to speak to this item in this public hearing? Seeing none, I'll recognize Council Vice President's motion to approve, second by Member Carbasi.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Aye.
Councilmember Soraya? Council Vice President Capriolio?
Yes.
President Arias?
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Council Vice President, for the reminder there. We'll next move on to the next item pulled, one R. Member Brettafield, you pulled the item?
Yes, can I ask perhaps Scott to come up? A number of questions related to this issue. The item is approve an agreement with Olympic Property Services LLC for Chinatown area cleanup not to exceed $250,000. The $250,000, is that, how, I'm wondering how that number came up? Is, I know Councilmember Arias, or Council President Arias, made a motion in June to clean up Chinatown for $250,000. Is that how that came about?
Good morning, council. Scott Moser, Public Works. Yes, as I understand, this was a budget motion back in June, adopted by the council.
Okay, and it says not to exceed $250,000. So I, I noticed that this bid that came in from, or proposal, I guess, it's not a bid because we didn't go out to bid, it's a proposal, that this would be $10,500 per month, which is $126,000 per year. And he has a bid here, and by the way, this bid came in yesterday at 10:40 something in the morning, didn't get it before then, which is problematic, as often happens, we get this, this information at the last minute. But it's for one year, November 1st, 2020, calls it Phase 1 to April 30th, 2021, then May 1st, 2022, November 1st, 2022, Phase 2, but it's a, it's a two-year contract at $126,000 per year, is that accurate?
That is my understanding.
Okay. And so can, it says up to $250,000. So we see amendments all the time coming, can, if he deems this proprietor, this owner, what? Okay, you okay? Can this owner say, I need more money, and he come before the council, make an amendment, and he can increase it from 126 up to $250,000, because that's what it says, up to $250,000? Is that possible to do?
That, that is possible. That may be a question for city attorney as to, you know, the wording of that contract and authority and how that works. And Public Works has not, not been involved in putting any type of contract together for this item.
If I understand your question, Member Brettafield, are you asking if the contract can be amended?
Yes.
And then would that require you to come back to council?
With an increase, so in other words, if this council approves this at $126,000 per year and this person who runs Olympic says, I need more money, can he come requesting more money? And if council so deems up to $250,000, he can raise it for that year? Or is the total contract just 250?
Well, yes, potentially, any contract can be amended with the agreement of the parties.
Well, I'm wondering with what's being said here, up to $250,000, is that per year? Can it happen in year one? Can it happen in year two?
The, the contract could be amended at any time to increase the amount.
Up to $250,000?
It could be even greater than $250,000.
Okay, that, that's what I'm trying to get at. Okay, so that can happen. Now, this, if I'm not mistaken, I just want to be clear and so everybody knows, this is, Olympic is the same company, maybe you can just give a very brief synopsis, where this council, I believe, approved on a 4-3 vote for this company to clean our highways. And this company, as I recall, over, had a higher cost to do the service and was going to do less service, and yet this council on a 4-3 vote approved it, but something didn't work out right, they weren't able to perform. Is that accurate? And maybe you can give us some brief synopsis, brief.
Yes, council, that is accurate as far as the process of the bid and then the award. Public Works worked closely with purchasing and city attorney's office with, with the vendor, Olympic, who council had awarded to. And it wasn't that they didn't, couldn't perform the service, they actually could not execute the contract with the city. They were unable to meet the insurance requirements, bonding, they were not able to work with Department of Industrial Relations at the state level and address the prevailing wage requirement. So unfortunately, we worked really hard as a team to get that contract executed, but then we came back to council and recommended to go, go with the low bidder on the job.
And this was a company that did cost the city more and was going to provide less service?
As stated in their bid proposal for highway litter, that's, that's the case. I can't speak to the one in Chinatown, but that was the case there.
And because they couldn't do all of what you said, then we had to go back and award it to the company that we should have awarded to initially. It was awarded to that company, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Wilma, city manager, why was this not put out to bid? This is what is the standard procedure. You have a service you want to provide, this goes out to bid. goes out to bid. Why was this not put out to bid?
I can't answer why it wasn't put out to bid, but I believe that it should have either been put out to bid, or this is something that we should have done internally through the Department of Public Utilities. So, so we were able, and Jim can speak to it, but this is a service that we will, we are able to provide internally at a much cheaper cost. And I know that-
You can provide it at a much cheaper cost.
And Jerry Schuber was able to do that. And Jerry's not here this week, but Jim is prepared to speak to what Jerry Schuber's costing was to do this work and how soon he was able to get out there.
Okay, so you're saying that the city, was this, why is that information not given to us that the city can do this cheaper?
This is not sponsored by my office, if you will notice on the agenda.
I noticed that.
So I can answer any question that you want. I also believe that we are, we hear weekly from council that the importance of staff going out to bid and doing a competitive bid process. And so that's why, if we weren't going to go internally, I truly believe that a competitive bid should have taken place for this.
Okay. So a competitive bid should have been done. It hasn't been done. Another question I have for you is the prevailing wage. Isn't there supposed to be a prevailing wage requirement?
I, I would defer-
We can't hear you, Jim.
I would defer to legal counsel for a specific answer, but I have, I, I do recall when we did the litter control contract for the freeway and our weed abatement contract through code enforcement, both of those were deemed requiring prevailing wage.
Okay, so this is supposed to, and do we need a city attorney? Is this supposed to require prevailing wage for this project?
Yes, it does.
Yes.
So why are we not doing that?
It is, it is-
It will require-
It will. Okay, so if he has the contract, that has to be done. Okay. Do you know why this wasn't done, put out to bid, city attorney? These are supposed to be put out to bid.
I can address those questions.
Okay, go ahead.
As I'm the sponsor.
Sure.
And you have any que, others, I'm taking out your questions.
Oh, I've got tons of questions.
Okay. Before I answer questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the item.
I think the council may want to hear what I have to say before you approve this.
Give me a second.
I'll second it.
I'll go it in a second.
All right.
Okay.
The second is by Member Carbasi, for the record. I'd be happy to answer your questions, Member Brettafield. I do want to point out a couple of inaccuracies. One, if you recall last year when we were bidding the embankment cleanup, the council voted to prioritize local vendors, because we wanted to keep jobs local. That was done on a 4-3. It was in just about the cost. The outside of, I think Riverside vendor objected to it because they were the lowest bidder. We had some very serious questions about their proposed lowest bid, because they weren't projecting prevailing wage. They were undercounting the cost. A couple of months later, that vendor came back with a request to increase that contract by a significant amount. They did staff, they did add more frequent cleanups to those freeways. In addition to that, this provider currently has the bonding capacity of $4 million, which is twice what the city requires. So I want to be clear that the bonding capacity is there. Secondly, I'd like to point out that the city manager has had two years to clean up Chinatown, and thus far, nothing's been done. The council approved the funding to clean up Chinatown in June, and yet, nothing has been done. If, I don't know when was the last time staff was in Chinatown, but there's a dozen piles of garbage there that at any time, our internal team could have done it. And I don't want to fault sanitation department, because they are, they are overwhelmed, rightfully so, with the amount of garbage. Their current system that, is that you go on your phone, on the Fresno Call app, you register the pile of garbage, and when they're available, they pick up the garbage. It was been occurring, council member, is, as, it takes city staff several days, it's taken sometimes up to 10 or 15 days to pick up the pile of garbage. That garbage goes from pile of garbage to a dumping site, where individuals drop off their couches, refrigerators, stoves, dishwashers. Sanitation's policy is that they don't pick up those bulk items. They don't pick up refrigerators, stoves, or dishwashers. That, they require the council offices to contract private vendors to pick up those bulk items, which several of our council offices have been doing for the last couple of years. So since there was no plan and there was no movement, I brought forward a vendor and a contract. And I want to be clear that the motion to approve this item is for the amount not to exceed $143,000.
That's not what this says. It says 250.
That's my motion. I just-
Oh, you're changing it?
Yes.
Okay. Can I finish now?
Yes.
Can I, can I just point something out? I believe I'm by my bag here.
City manager, give me one second. I, I have the floor, and then I'm going to go to council member.
Okay.
Okay? So the motion is to approve the item at the amount not to exceed $143,000. If the second motion is okay with that?
Yes.
And I also want to be clear about this, city staff. This is intended to be an immediate solution to an immediate crisis that we have in Chinatown. When we cleaned up Santa Clara Street, everybody moved to Chinatown, and there was no plan to clean up Chinatown. So the businesses there have been taking the brunt of the homeless impact for years. Secondly, we're, we, I've been very clear with city staff that this is a six-month pilot. If it works, we'll continue doing it to the maximum amount allowed in the contract. If city staff is prepared in that time period to bring it in-house, we'll bring it in-house. But I've been waiting for 18 months for city staff to clean up Chinatown. In the last budget, the staff directed for a plan to come up to clean Chinatown. That didn't occur. In the last budget, the council allocated $250,000 to clean up Chinatown. Rightfully so, the pandemic has put a lot of work on everybody's plate. Sanitation has been as responsive as they can, but there's a lot of garbage in our city. So this is my solution to address the immediate crisis in Chinatown. And I would just add this final point. We're about to start construction on a $40 million housing project. These piles of garbage are becoming fire hazards. The last thing I want is that housing project, when it's under construction, to be lit on fire, because piles of garbage are piling up on the side of the street that are not being picked up. And lastly, this coincides with what we do in downtown. In Fulton Street, they have a daily cleanup. If you recall, council, we had a robust conversation, because the cost was in the $400,000 range for the daily cleanup of Fulton Street. This last year, we launched a pilot in the Tower District to do also weekly cleanups with an outside vendor that actually operates and has a business in the Tower District. This is the third attempt for us to do some dedicated cleanup in the pedestrian-heavy sections of our business corridors. And if you have concerns with it, I'm open to hearing those concerns, but I want to be clear that we've given the City of Fresno staff years to come up with an alternative, and they haven't. And I'm not going to wait for the housing project to burn down as the Armenian town burned down, for folks to come up with a solution to a problem that we know exists.
Mr. President, can I get some clarification on something? So I'm, I'm trying to understand. I don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill here. So if I recall, Chinatown's not in my district, unfortunately, but it's a great asset for this city. If I recall, before the Great Recession, there was going to be a lot more mixed-use development, and then the recession hit, Chinatown lost that opportunity.
Okay, point of order. I was supposed to get the floor back. We're way off.
I have the microphone, sir. I'm sorry.
Well, no, I'm talking to the council president, who should be giving it back to me. I ceded it to you, and now we're going off on different tangents.
If you allow, if you allow me, Councilmember Carbasi, let me do a Councilmember Brettafield for questions, and I'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Okay. So Scott, did you have something you wanted to address, or no?
I didn't.
Okay, and then Jim and-
Russ Fulton, just to, just to show the differentiation between the two, please.
Absolutely. Fulton Street, so a little bit of history, just with, with the mall. We have the P-bid in the area. The city has some obligations for baseline services. And on Fulton Street, it's all self-performed by, by city forces. The council approved an agreement with the federal government on the Tiger Grant for us to operate and maintain. So what we do, we have the fountains, we have the cleaning of the fountains, and then also on Fulton, we have just, we have one crew who just moves basically up and down the mall. On a weekly basis, we blow down the sidewalks in the area, and just like Chinatown, we do weekly street sweeping in the area. Unfortunately, in Chinatown, the piles, the council has talked about, often affect the, the street sweeper, because they have to move around the piles. So we're not doing as good a job as we could because of the illegal dumping in Chinatown.
This, this is, this is not about Chinatown. My objections. Jim, do you have something saying that I would like to continue?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify some of the council president's clarifications. There was mention of the freeway contract increasing, and yes, that did increase. That increased specifically for additional services. We had funding available to increase the frequency, and I see that as a good thing, that we were able to utilize that funding, which some came from FCTA and some came from Caltrans, to actually perform more service than originally anticipated, which was significantly more service than Olympic had offered. Secondly, when we're talking about why we have not been able to get out there to, to do that, the change has been this injection of additional funding. There's discussion that the community sanitation and solid waste folks could not get out there. That was a funding issue. Now we have injected $250,000 into it. I was approached by the council president's office to provide a price by our solid waste folks. Jerry Schuber provided that price. The first year was roughly $75,000, and he indicated to me that he could start on, as early as October 15th. So we were ready to go, and we provided every bit of information, tried to satisfy the council president's needs for that information, and, and we were a bit surprised that this showed up on, on the agenda. So that's where we're at.
Okay. So-
Gary, do you mind if I just, I want to piggyback and just clarify something else, too. Council President, you've been on record recently giving staff accolades for the cleanup that we did on Santa Clara. I truly, and I don't want to send a mixed message to staff, but we've moved mountains in the time of a pandemic, working through the governor's orders to hire outside counsel to deal with the homeless on Santa Clara so we could do a cleanup for you. And you have been on record recently stating that, that staff did an excellent job, and I don't want to-
City manager.
I, I just, you know, I, I, my job is also to protect staff.
I understand that.
I want to make sure that they know.
But let me be clear, you didn't do me a favor.
Okay.
You served the homeless people that you allowed to build to a 300-person encampment for a whole year. You protected the health and safety of the homeless residents.
During a pandemic, which we weren't able to move folks, but we-
I understand, but I want to be clear. This is no favor to me.
Council President, can I call for the question?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Can I get, get back to where I'm-
The question-
Call for the question. We have to, we have to do a vote for call the question.
The point of the order is, the question's been called. Let's do-
No, no, no. I'm going to speak. You gave me the mic, you've now let it go back. This is a corrupt process.
Councilmember.
You all ought to care. I know you think it's funny, Paul. You're part of the swamp.
Let me go to-
There's nothing but a swamp going on down here.
That's totally inappropriate. We should not be dividing each other.
And you've joined the swamp, Mr. Carbasi, and I want, I want people to be able to hear what's going on here. This is a corrupt process. You're part of it. You're leading it. You've just changed the goalpost again to 143, which is what the city staff said. Now I want the floor.
Councilmember, can you allow me to go to the public?
I'm sorry to the public, by the way. This whole exchange is shameful.
I want the floor.
And this is not, this is no decorum.
Yes, it is shameful, Mr. Carbasi. You should be ashamed, too.
Councilmember, let's take a five-minute break.
Gary, Councilmember Brettafield, I don't have any reason to be shameful for following the law. I respect you.
Oh, no, you have a shame to follow this corruption that's going on right here with this contract. Total corruption.
Gary, you can resign. If there's so much corruption, we'll take your-
Councilmember Brettafield. Cool. Is that Chavez, or Nelson?
We need our city attorney here, too.
That was me.
All right, cool.
Where's the city attorney?
Oh, city attorney's not here. All right, let's call the, let's go to the public before we call the item to question. Anybody?
I have the floor, Mr. President.
Allow me to go to the public. Anybody from the public wishing to speak to the item? There are two individuals. Lisa Flores, you're unmuted.
Okay, first off, Chinatown does need to be cleaned up, and it is a fire hazard if you allow a bunch of trash to sit around. And people love to burn things, because a couple of years ago, we had an arsonist going up and down 168, starting fires. So you need to look at that. The second issue I want to mention is, guys, get it together. That last discourse was not something I ever want to hear again. I mean, seriously, do I need to come down and chonkla everybody? What the hell? Behave. Let's have some civil, you know, civil conversation, because you represent me, and you're embarrassing me.
Thank you, Ms. Flores.
Thank you.
Next person is Deidre Lee Jackson. You're unmuted.
Good morning. I would like to echo what Ms. Flores just said. You all are public representatives, and there's never a need to blow up like that, nor to call for anybody's resigning, especially when we're talking about cleaning our streets up. And the reason the call for resign is happening is because you want to be able to speak. This, this issue is much greater than this. Please be mindful that people are still dying in your streets and are still homeless. So please try to stay focused on the topic at hand. And yeah, just, just be better. Just be better.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I'll bring any other person. Sam Frank, you're unmuted.
Hi, I'm Sam Frank. I'm president of the Fresno City Employees Association. I want to thank you for the chance to speak, council president and esteemed councilperson. I just want to say that anytime we seek to privatize services that can be done by city staff, associations and unions get concerned. And while we are in COVID, and while there is a lot of trash down in that area, and it does need to get cleaned up, and I, I think that that would lend towards a more short-term solution, because COVID's not going to be around forever. This is a two-year contract, and I believe if it was more of a one-year contract, it would be more palatable to the employees who would be seeing work that they're already hired to do, being farmed out at, at additional cost to the private sector. And, and that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the dice.
Yes, I'd like the floor back.
Go ahead.
Thank you. City manager, Jeff, or Jim, what I want people to understand is, you received from Olympic, which we did not get in our packet, September 10th, I'm holding it right here, same outline for the same services. We got a different proposal yesterday, yesterday morning from the same person, for $125,000 in September 10th. We got the same proposal for $250,000. After, we got, actually, council member, or Council President Arias got this, he sent you this and asked you to look at, could we do it in-house? Is that correct?
One clarification. I did not get the quote from Olympic. I received that from the council office.
But you then did an analysis, and the analysis is in my hand, and the city staff could do this for $78,358.22, not $250,000. Is that correct?
That is what our DPU folks estimated.
And the second year, they said they could do it for $65,490.81. Is that correct?
Yes, that was, the difference in price was just the initial year we would have to buy a pressure washer trailer.
Okay. So the initial proposal, which this council didn't get for $250,000 from Olympic, 250 in September, you were able to do for $78,000. That's a savings of $47,642 that more, Olympic would have charged more for the $125,000 contract he gave us today. The second year, they would be charging the city $60,000 more than what we could do it. A total of $108,000 more. If we went off the first contract, which was $250,000, we would have been paying $348,000 more. But they changed the contract. Now, the contract changed from September, which you never saw, we got the one yesterday that's half, half of what they said in September for the same services. What changed? What changed? How did we do the same services 30 days later for half the cost? Did something happen in Did something happen in our community? Did, I mean, something happened where all those costs went down?
I might lend this. This is is a good example of why we would do a competitive process.
Yes, of course, that's exactly right. That's exactly why public dollars go out for public bid. Instead, we have a moving goalpost and they just changed just now. I started this by saying it's up to $250,000. And the council president said, oh, no, we're going to do it from not to exceed $143,000. Well, guess what? $143,000 is the amount of our city staff bid for the two years. What an interesting amount. We've now whittled it down to $143,000. The bottom line is, we didn't get what was going on with the first bid. The bids have changed. City staff gave us a bid, didn't tell us it's not in our packet. We have no information about this. And so what we're being asked to do is spend $108,000 more of taxpayer money without even knowing that the city staff have bid on it or put out what they could do it for. And yet, everyone here on this dais is going to support this. This is a corrupt process. The taxpayers are being ripped off. This isn't about Chinatown. This is about a corrupt process. Council President Arias put out a bid $250,000 in June and then got a bid proposal from Olympic in September for $250,000. What a coincidence. And then it changed 30 days later and cut it in half for the same services. This is about giving lucrative and overpriced contracts to friends. Anybody supporting this is engaging in supporting this kind of corruption. The services didn't change, the price did. And it just changed on the dais when I was raising these issues. We went from 250 to 143. Counsel, you want to support this? You act like you're the big protectors of taxpayer money. And we have a city, a city manager who said they should have gone out to bid and they can do it for cheaper. We didn't do bidding and it's going out for more expense. Same as it did months ago where this company couldn't perform. To me, that's a completely corrupt process and that's why I'm not going to support any of this nonsense.
Thank you, council member.
Can it be returned back to me, Mr. President?
Yes, Councilmember Karbasi.
Thank you. I bet you wish you had a mic kill switch, huh?
I actually do, but I'm not using it.
Using it for me, too, I understand. Okay, so if anyone's still watching, I'm sure you're pretty disgusted with the process and I apologize for that. I think things got pretty heated. I I mentioned earlier, and this is something that I've learned in my year and a half here. Again, this whole either or thing, the comment, if you if you support this, you're engaging in corruption. You know, people aren't stupid, they're not going to fall for that. It's that kind of politics hurting this country. Councilmember Bretafeld, you made a comment personally attacking me and I understand. I consider you a friend, I don't take it personally. I know things get heated. I know how passionate you are about protecting taxpayer dollars and I appreciate that. The way I look at it, as a resident of this city, I've been interested in Chinatown since I was a student at Fresno State and had a senior project dealing with development in Chinatown. That part of the city has gotten the short end of the stick for a very, very long time. There's a lot of history, excuse me, there's a great deal of history there. The recession didn't help them. High speed rail didn't help them. You know, I go to Central Fish, it's a great business down there. But it's very difficult to access Chinatown for the last couple of years because of the high, excuse me, high speed rail construction. So let me ask a couple of questions. Now, to Sam Frank and to the workers in D P U, you're a great department. COVID has hit everyone really hard. There are people that are out because they were exposed, have to take care of a loved one. And we want to make sure you have the ability to to take care of yourself and your family through this crisis, even though you know you are an essential service to the city. But how many months behind is Operation Cleanup? Can I get an answer on that?
I I had mentioned that Jerry is not in today. He is actually on vacation, a well deserved one.
Sure.
So I don't have that answer off the top of my head. I do want everybody to keep in mind that what we are talking about here would add employees to provide this service.
Okay. What I'm, the reason why I bring that up, and I I had a lot of folks in District Two reach out wondering, when's Operation Cleanup happening? It's actually happening now and I really appreciate the service we're getting from D P U. But it's very behind. And with COVID, we have employees and unfortunately, as they're, it's their right, they get exposed and they have to shelter in place or they have to take care of a loved one. And I think as an employer, we want to, if I don't speak out of turn, we want to make sure they have the opportunity. How long is Chinatown going to have to wait to get service? Sometimes council members have to get creative to find a way to meet the needs of their district. And I can understand that. Councilmember Arias and I often spar and we disagree on issues. But I can understand as a council member his desire to take care of his district. And I don't think any of us are being corrupt doing that. The number was lowered. I would expect that would make Councilmember Bretafeld and the administration happy. Apparently, they're not happy about that, fine. But I'm a bit concerned that if we don't farm this very small project out, there it's going to keep hurting Chinatown. I don't see the harm in doing that. I still see us as spending the same amount of money because of the change that was made. And we're protecting the residents of the area that are paying for it. We're bickering up here and making ourselves look like fools. But it's the people in Chinatown, the investors in Chinatown, that are hurt. So I I think we are making a mountain out of a molehill, unfortunately.
Do you do you mind if I respond?
Assistant City Manager, if you would allow me. I think we spent quite a bit of time. I I just want to add that the description that the Council Bretafeld made has so many inaccuracies that I don't want to take up any more time correcting it. But I will tell you that we looked at the city's proposal and they had proposed two hours a week of pressure washing. That's what it would take Chinatown. That's just not what it would take. Again, our staff has done the best they can with the limited staff that they have, especially when they were on short staff during the COVID restrictions. I simply want to move on from this conversation and call for the question. And in addition to this motion, drag city staff to begin the developing the R F P process that if it's as normal, it'll take between six months and a year to complete. And at that time, we can revisit this conversation. But if you would like, I'd like to call for the question and do roll call.
I want to make clear, though, that our proposal was to hire dedicated staff to do this. And and was that an attack at our R F P process and how long it takes?
We're not going to engage in attack, City Manager. We're trying to be very respectful of staff. We're trying to be respectful of each other. So there's no need for those kind of questions.
I I have one question, just so we get this out of the way if this passes. And it's really for council. If if this passes, I assume that the execution of the contract by the city manager's office is ministerial in nature?
Yes.
I I was asking the attorney then. Thank you.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bretafeld.
Nope.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Esparza.
Aye.
Councilmember Karbasi.
Yes.
Councilmember Soria. Council Vice President Capriolio.
Yes.
And President Arias.
Yes, thank you, council. Now we'll move on to item one U. I think it's Councilmember Esparza who pulled the item.
Oh, Council President, point of order, I apologize. I did pull one T, but my understanding was I was out of the room and that was.
Yeah, I thought we you hadn't.
No, it's one of the CARES issues. I do want to hear that.
Then we will make a motion to reconsider the item.
I appreciate that.
Is there a second for that motion? Second by Council Vice President Capriolio. Roll call, please, to reconsider one T for a separate discussion.
Councilmember Bretafeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Esparza.
Aye.
Councilmember Karbasi.
Yes.
Councilmember Soria. Council Vice President Capriolio.
Yes.
And President Arias.
Yes. All right, council, so since we're up to one T, I'm going to go back to Councilmember Karbasi. So we remain in order, your item.
I appreciate that. So I really would, if the council would please indulge me. I've been waiting, and I I know that's a lot of information, to get the memo to see exactly where we are with CARES allocations. I'd like to table this item for the next council meeting so that we can have a chance to review where we actually are. Because if we're at the tail end of CARES Act dollars, we want to make sure we spend every dollar with the maximum benefit. Would council be amenable to postponing this item?
I would be open to a council member. This simply appropriates some money. But we are going to be discussing all the items related to homeless on October 29th. So we can hear it then.
If that's okay, I appreciate that.
All right, would you like to make a motion to table?
Make a motion to table to the 29th.
All right, the motion's been made, I'll second it. Let's do roll call, please.
Councilmember Bretafeld. He's recused. Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Esparza.
Aye.
Councilmember Karbasi.
Yes.
Councilmember Soria. Council Vice President Capriolio.
Yes.
And President Arias.
Yes, all right, the items move to one, October 29th. Item one T. Now one U, Councilmember Esparza.
Yeah, so I think we had discussed this last, this item last week in the context of the R N M A and taking a look at how, notwithstanding the R N M A, the challenges we have with attracting grocery stores in some of our food deserts in underserved communities. So I'll give, you know, Councilmember Chavez just a chance to kind of reiterate and reinforce his purpose here with this with this item. But I I do think that, and I've expressed this to Councilmember Chavez, I do think that grocery incentive policy in a one week is a bit hasty. We ought to look into different options, right? Whether we, so we've started with essentially a restriction on quantity, right? In terms of alcohol licenses, there are different options. I mean, there is this exemption, that's a possibility. We could regulate price of the liquor licenses within that market. We could subsidize as a city, right? So there's there's just different angles and approaches we could take. And I'm not sure that, you know, us voting on this item one week after the R N M A is going to necessarily accomplish that goal. And I have concerns about undermining the the purpose of the R N M A, the Responsible Neighborhood Market Act.
Yeah, Councilmember Esparza, if I'm definitely, I think you know me by now, I'm very pragmatic. Would you like to postpone this to the next council meeting to have that discussion? Or is, are you, is your comfort level just not going to be there?
I I mean, I I'd like to postpone this until we, I mean, we kind of flush things out. So there was an email I had sent to you offline that expressed a number of different concerns. I think we can put together a good policy. Just it might take a little time and we need some data. I I think with the R N M A, we we addressed a decades long issue that's that's there. It's present, we have data. And what we're trying to do now is difficult because we're trying to sort of mitigate a potentially future problem, right? The the issue is hypothetical at this point. It I mean, I wouldn't say it exists. We, what does exist is is there are issues attracting grocery stores, right? That that's been there. So, you know, we want to be, want to create an intensive package for grocery stores while still being sensitive to the purpose and the intention of the R N M A. So I I mean, I I, one week was too, is too soon. I think two weeks is too soon. I think at least a month, I was just kind of just going back and forth, addressing those concerns that I emailed you about.
So council members.
And I'm I'm open to that. Why don't we do this? Why don't we table the the item and you and I can can have a conversation? And if you're comfortable, we can bring it back. If you're not comfortable, then maybe we just bring it back and we'll see what the will of the council is.
Sure, and I'm happy to hear from the from the council today as well, just to give us some kind of some guidance. And I'm happy to share more details about what I had expressed in the email.
Council members.
Because I think this will be a longer conversation with cheating this text. And I think there'll be a lot more conversations that'll happen as a result of this.
So council members, it sounds like you two have reached a compromise to table the item and bring it back when you guys have further discussions? Can I get that?
Yeah, do we need a motion to do that, Council President?
Yes, I'd like a motion from the sponsor. All right, there's a motion by the Councilmember Chavez to postpone the item. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Member Esparza, let me go to the public first. Is there any questions from the public on this item being postponed? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the dice. Councilmember Bretafeld, you have the floor.
Yeah, Councilmember Chavez, so you want to bring this, when do you plan on bringing this back? Because, I mean, I I think we can move forward. I understand Councilmember Esparza's wanting to flush things out. I'm not sure what what more will get flushed out. But do you know when you want to bring this back? Because I think it's an important thing.
Yeah, you know, absolutely. And and I think, you know, this needs a little bit more work. I think my intent with this was just to start the conversation. We know that a text amendment takes a little bit of time to work its way through. But, you know, for the sake of, I don't want to go fast. I want to make sure we get it right and that it works for our council districts. So I'm anticipating bringing this back within the month. You know, perhaps with, along with the items that I know you're going to be bringing forward, Councilmember Bretafeld, and maybe we can pair those up at the same time and work through some of the language. And at the end of the day, if, you know, Councilmember Esparza is not comfortable, I think we'll just, you know, see where the will of the council is on on this item.
Yeah, good for me, I'm okay with that. I just, I think this is really important. We passed the ordinance last week or the week last week. And we want to make these exemptions for the groceries. I mean, we all feel the same way. Certainly want to not have liquor stores permeate neighborhoods, but we want to make sure we get it right and and provide a means for grocery stores to come in, healthy stores to come in. And so I don't want to delay that process. And with a text amendment, I mean, that takes already how many months before that winds its way through? Three to four months. So, yeah, let's let's do this as quickly as as we can. Thank you.
And I would say, I mean, just sort of as a last word to my colleagues, that, again, the R N M A addressed something that was a decades long urgency. And again, what we have here is, again, I think we're trying to solve a future problem. And so it it's tougher to get a grasp on on some of on some of that. So there is some current data, we'll work with the best we have, Councilmember Chavez and I. And we'll hopefully bring something very productive forward. Again, it allows the R N M A to continue doing what it's supposed to do.
Mr. President.
Councilmember Karbasi.
Sorry, guys, I can't help myself. Just to make it clear, the R N M A is not going to keep the current liquor stores that are the problem out of the neighborhoods. It's going to reward them. Just, I'm just, I'm sorry, I had to get that back out there, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Karbasi, for reinjecting a very vigorous debate from last week.
Call for the question.
We'll call for the question. There's no comments from the public, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bretafeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Esparza.
Aye.
Councilmember Karbasi.
Yes.
Councilmember Soria. Council Vice President Capriolio.
Yes.
President Arias.
Yes. The next two items are Councilmember Bretafeld's, item one B as in Victor.
Yeah, I just, why, why are we extending? That's all. It's for both items.
I think that when we first proposed these, they were kind of on a temporary, but we want to continue to offer the incentives. We know that there's been a vigorous discussion on trying to attract investment, especially grocery stores to areas that are disadvantaged. And this would essentially waive fees. And sometimes the argument that we get from developers is that there's a gap, right? And so it doesn't pencil. So I think this would provide an incentive for them to come and invest in underserved neighborhoods.
I was wondering why why the extension, but I'm fully in favor of those kinds of incentives. So, yeah, make the motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by a member Soria, second by a member Bretafeld. Any public comments?
Yeah.
Okay, for both items.
There are no public comments on item. There's a motion to approve item one B as in Victor and one W. There's a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bretafeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Esparza.
Aye.
Councilmember Karbasi.
Aye.
Councilmember Soria. Council Vice President Capriolio?
Yes.
President Arias.
Yes. Thank you, council. Council, we're, um, ahead of schedule for the next public hearing at 1:30, so I'm going to skip around the agenda. We're going to next hear the, um, resolution authorizing the Finance Department to decline participation of the optional federal payroll tax. Staff prepared?
Yeah, Jeff is here.
Jeff, Director, would you please come up? As a reminder, staff, you requested that, um, staff, um, reach out to our labor partners and get their feedback, um, on this item. You have the floor.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. Jeff Cardell, Director of Personnel Services, consistent with your request, we did survey, uh, with our bargaining units. We did not receive any response back from our bargain units that asked, that indicated that they were interested at all. Um, and we also reached out to our temporary employees through the respective departments, and did not receive any interest as well there.
All right, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution directing the Finance Department to decline the city's participation in the optional federal payroll deferral program. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, um, anybody from the public wishing to address this item? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bretafeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Karbasi?
Yes.
Councilmember Soria? Council Vice President Capriolio?
Yes.
President Arias.
Yes. Councilmember Chavez, we're going to go to you next. Um, the resolution approving the honorary street name change designating Lane Avenue in southeast Fresno to also be known as Lyles Avenue, and at the entrance to Sunnyside High School. Councilmember Chavez, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, just want to, uh, submit this for consideration for the council. Um, as many of you know and are familiar with, our, um, late principal at Sunnyside, Tim Lyles, um, former teacher, uh, leadership teacher at Roosevelt, um, went on to work at Sunnyside when they opened the new campus, um, and, and I got to share with, um, you know, not just my colleagues, but the public, um, I received over 1,200 emails, uh, in support of this, and what was really, uh, you know, touching for me was the fact that this was a, uh, youth-led, uh, initiative, um, sparked on social media. A lot of the, um, students, former students, um, and, and current students there at Sunnyside really pushed, uh, for this. And again, I want to thank the family, uh, for working with us, um, especially, um, Ron, uh, Tim's brother. Um, I had a conversation with him, uh, yesterday. Uh, they were very appreciative, uh, and I urged my colleagues to vote yes. I do want to submit one correction for the record. Um, the name of the, of the street will be Tim Lyles Way, um, so if we could have the record reflect that, and with that, I will make the motion.
I will second your motion with the correction for the record, Tim Lyles Way. Is there any members of public wishing to address this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for roll call.
Councilmember Bretafeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Karbasi?
Aye.
Councilmember Soria? Council Vice President Capriolio?
Yes.
President Arias.
Yes. Council, that completes the public portion of the agenda. We will come back, um, at 1:30 for the proposed 7-Eleven on Cedar and Tillery Street. In the meantime, I ask that you join us in closed session. We will conduct closed session for approximately 45 minutes before we break for lunch, and then come back at 1:30 for the public portion of the meeting. City Attorney, would you announce what's on closed session?
Excuse me, City Attorney. Uh, I have a medical appointment. I didn't know we had 1:30 scheduled, so I'll be late.
Could we, could we make it at two? Commendate, uh, Councilmember, does that help you?
That would probably, 2:30. Uh, I'd have to wait an hour after the treatment. There's a, there's a process, so... But I don't want to hold people up.
Yeah, I, I think we have, uh, folks coming at, at 1:30, so I'd, I'd prefer to keep it at that time.
Uh, as I say, I can't avoid this.
That's fine.
Life or death for me.
No worries. That's more important than this particular item at this time. Legal counsel, what's on closed session?
Yes, in closed session, we have, uh, count, uh, conference of legal counsel for public security, also, uh, existing litigation concerning Colony Energy Partners versus the city, uh, also litigation Aguaia versus City of Fresno, uh, evaluation and, uh, negotiations concerning the city clerk and city attorney, and also conference with real property negotiator concerning the listed APN.
Thank you, City Counsel.
Are we, are we doing them in that order?
We will do it in the order of, um, outside attorneys first, to save us some money.
Okay.
And then we'll finish up with staff. Thank you all. See you back at 1:30.
All right, uh, we will officially begin the meeting at 1:35 in the afternoon. We will start off with the hearing scheduled for 1:30, consideration of a conditional use permit, application number P20-00545, located in the northwest corner of North Cedar Avenue and East Tillery Street in District Seven. The, this is applying Development Department. Uh, you can step forward and, uh, present the item to the council, please.
Good afternoon, council members. Thank you. Um, presentation on this, I would just wanted to bring up that, uh, the planner is, uh, able to respond remotely on Zoom, and, uh, I believe he is available to answer questions and present the, uh, the staff report, or some, uh, some aspects of the staff report, if he is available. Uh, Thomas, are you, uh, online?
Staff, is, uh, is the applicant going to present the item?
He is online, so...
Okay.
If he's, uh, coming up.
This is in District Seven, so Councilmember Sparza, I will default to you after the presentation.
Council President, I wanted to, um, go ahead and, uh, have the applicant come up and speak. I believe that they would like to request a continuance on this matter. She can come up. Bonique Emerson is here, uh, representing the, the applicant on this, and will come up to, uh, to speak.
Um, applicant, are you online?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking for you online. Uh, sorry, Ms., uh, Bonique. My apologies, I should have been looking up and not down to the screen. After you speak, Bonique, we'll turn it over to the council member from the district.
Council President, council members, my name is Bonique Emerson with Precision Civil Engineering. I represent the developer on this project, SKW Tillery LLC, and we do have a presentation, but we would like to request a continuance based on some information received recently, and just to clarify a few things on the record. So we'd request that the item be continued to the next council meeting at a date certain.
Thank you for your request. Legal counsel, uh, do I need to go out to the public before I consider a motion for, to continue the item?
If it's purely a procedural motion, that would not be necessary.
Okay.
I, 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 I would still prefer, I mean, we give folks, I think there might be one or two people, um, who came to speak, um, so I'd appreciate just giving, uh, them a short opportunity, uh, to give some brief remarks as well.
All right, with that said, we'll go to public, uh, for comment on this item. Any member of the public in attendance wishing to address the 1:30 item? Looks like it is a proposed 7-Eleven on Cedar and Tillery. Uh, we have Frank. You will be unmuted, and you can address the council.
Good afternoon. My name is Frank Chaldelli. Excuse me. I live at 4043 East Tillery Street in Fresno. And, uh, as I understand, that the, uh, developer has asked for a continuance till the next, uh, uh, meeting?
That, that, that is what we are hearing from the, from the applicant, yes.
Well, then, um, rather than take your time up today, can we speak then at the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, because we would rather do that, uh, when it just comes to, when you guys are ready to make the vote, rather than waste time today and waste time then. So we appreciate, I appreciate you, uh, uh, hearing us today and looking forward to the, uh, next meeting. Thank you very much, council members.
Thank you, Frank. Appreciate your thoughtfulness. Um, we will expect it the next time we discuss this item. The next person is Larry Lopez.
Yes, I'd like to, um, thank the council for allowing me to speak today. Um, my name is Larry Lopez, I'm the Athletic Director at Roosevelt High School, and, um, I'd like to thank the council and 7-Eleven for this opportunity for us to build a partnership with each other in our community. Um, 7-Eleven and ourselves has, they have reached out to us and tried to, um, work a community partnership with Roosevelt High School Athletics. Uh, one of the needs that we have at Roosevelt High School is to, um, have a scoreboard at our main football facility. Um, that would do us a lot of good in a lot of ways. We're one of the last two schools in Fresno Unified not to have a scoreboard on their main field, and with that being said, it would allow us to maybe be able to play football at home, um, and have, I mean, I know it sounds weird, but school dances. A lot of the times, we play football either at Sunnyside or McLean, and by doing that, we never have any kind of school dances after football games like most schools have, because we're so far away from the school, and it's hard for our kids to get back to the school to do anything like that. This would allow us to maybe play football on campus, it would be beneficial for our soccer programs, our lacrosse, our middle schools who play football on our campus on, on weekends, and so we're really excited with the fact that, um, they have reached out to us to build this partnership and, and put something like that, that would be a landmark, um, at Roosevelt High School. It would be very, very, um, cosmetically, it would be great for our school, and it would, um, also put us in a position where, um, we would look like many of the schools across town. So really excited about the opportunity to have that happen.
Thank you, Larry. Any other speakers wishing to address this item? Seeing none, we'll come back. Councilmember, uh, Sparza, would you like to make a motion?
Uh, yes, I'd like to ask the, uh, the applicant, uh, you know, what's, uh, you know, why, why are, a little, more specifics on why they're asking for the continuance, just so I get a clearer picture.
Um, this is Sid Weiner speaking. Can you hear me?
Sure, yes.
Yes, proceed.
We just want to put our best foot forward, and this is obviously very important, because we only get one shot at it, and, um, uh, it's really as simple as that. We would like to work on our presentation a little bit more, if possible.